December the 21st. On the agenda is the honoring of the flag, followed by a moment of reflection by Supervisor Jansen. So supervisors reasonably together. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was reasonably good. Thank you Supervisor Jansen.
Thank you. As 2021 draws to a close, I want to take a moment to thank all of the Eau Claire County employees from every department across the entire organization. I think it's safe to say that over the past year, every single county staff member has likely been faced with some unexpected challenge. These hurdles have been met with incredible resilience and adaptability. You all did everything in your power to ensure that you were able to provide needed services to the community, no matter what. I'm sure there are times when you may have felt like your efforts weren't noticed. I'll never be able to give you all the recognition that you deserve, but I promise that we appreciate you more than words can describe. Thank you for working hard every day to make Eau Claire County a better place to live, work, and play. I also want to thank my colleagues on the Eau Claire County Board of Supervisors. It's an exciting time of the year for us. Many of you are braving icy sidewalks and knocking on doors to gather nomination signatures. I thank you for your continued service and wish you the best of luck on your upcoming campaigns. For some of us, myself included, we have made the bittersweet decision to take a step back and not seek reelection. It isn't easy, but we know that by doing so, we are giving others the opportunity to share their unique experience and their perspectives. I've enjoyed getting to know all of you over the past three and a half years, and I have made friendships that will last a lifetime. We all come from different backgrounds, careers, and generations, but we are all united by one thing. We care deeply about Eau Claire and the Eau Claire community. Thank you all for making a difference. I wish you all a very happy holiday season and a wonderful new year.
Thank you Supervisor Jansen. Next on our agenda is approval of the Journal of Proceedings from December the 7th, 2021. The Chair looks for a motion.
We need to do roll call.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Thank you. It's good that you're there to remind me. Sue, are you doing roll call?
Yes.
Okay.
Supervisor Gibson?
Present.
McKinney?
Present.
Knight? Supervisor Knight? Pagonis?
Here.
Anton?
Present.
Zook?
Here.
Gilson?
Here.
Delges?
Here.
Maury? Coffee?
Here.
Otto? Supervisor Otto?
He's online, but he's muted.
Are you muted? I can see you. You see here. All right. Bates?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Yatlin?
Present.
Meyer?
Here.
Hamburg Boyle?
Here.
Neiman?
Here.
Dunning?
Here.
Wilkie?
Here.
Anderson?
Present.
Beckfield?
Here.
Snyder?
Here.
Leary?
Here.
DeLuca?
Here.
Jansen?
Here.
Rothnagle?
Here.
Roberts? Supervisor Roberts? Frank?
Here.
Christopherson? I believe I saw Supervisor Christopherson. She is there, but it appears her microphone is not working.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Present. Thank you.
So 27 present, two absent.
We do have court. Thank you. And now we really will move on to the Journal of Proceedings. Chair looks for a motion.
Beckfield moves.
Beckfield moves.
Yatlin second.
Yatlin seconds. Thank you. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the Journal of Proceedings of December 7th? Any corrections, deletions? I hear none. Thank you. We'll do this by voice vote. All those in favor of approval of the Journal of Proceedings of December the 7th, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay. It is unanimous. Thank you. Kirk McDonald, do we have any public comment?
We do. We have four people who wish to speak.
Okay. Will you call them forward, please?
First up, Sue Olson. Are you on the line? Sue Olson? Kirk McDonald, give me one second. I'm just going to try to unmute these two callers. I'm not sure who they are. If you're calling in, please press star six to unmute. Thank you. Either caller, Sue Olson? We'll go back to Becky Sholsey. Becky Sholsey? Becky is on and unmuted. Becky?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
All right. Hi, everyone, and thank you for having us tonight. My name is Becky Sholsey. I'm from Humboldt, which is in Jackson County, and I'm the founder of Unchained Wisconsin. I've been an advocate for chain dogs for the past 15 years and witnessed suffering and complete neglect of dogs that spend their entire lives chained, day after day, year after year. I've made hundreds of phone calls to law enforcement requesting welfare checks for dogs with no shade or water in the hot summer sun and for dogs with little to no shelter in Wisconsin's severe winters. As we all know, every winter, we can get well past 30 below temperatures with even colder wind chills, and it is absolutely miserable for them and sometimes deadly. Let's make it unlawful to leave an animal chained in extreme weather conditions that could lead to injury or death. I was contacted by Eau Claire County resident Pamela Johnson, whose neighbor has a dog that is chained 24/7. Together, a group of us has been working on this ordinance to better the lives of animals who suffer the same fate in this county. We are not here today because we've only seen one chained dog in the county. It is a problem, and unfortunately, because of lacking laws, it will grow. We are asking for shelter to be windproof and waterproof, to keep animals warm in Wisconsin's winters, for natural or artificial shade to keep them cool in the summer heat, and for chaining to not be a permanent means of confinement. A large pen would be an alternative to a chain, and we ask that shelter is better than what is on the books for the state right now. We are asking you to adopt Chapter 8.30 of the Code, Standards for the Care of Domestic Animals. Let's make it easier for the humane officer to do her job, protect animals right here in Eau Claire County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Pamela Johnson. Pamela?
Hello?
Hello. Is this Pamela?
Yep.
Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, here we go. Good evening, everyone. My name is Pamela Johnson. I'm in Eau Claire, and I'm asking you to adopt Chapter 8.30 of the Code, Standards for the Care of Domestic Animals. Excuse me. After witnessing many dogs over the years that were secured 24/7, I came across Becky from Unchained, Wisconsin, as you just heard, who motivated me to help get laws changed in the county. Thankfully, we found Missy, who has been instrumental in getting us this far. Thank you, Missy. I've talked with many people over the years who share my thoughts and views on animals. The stories about finding and treating these poor dogs are heartbreaking. Therefore, I'm asking for better shelter laws and a ban on permanent chaining in our county. Many states and counties throughout the country have already adopted similar laws. There are many animals here in the county that have little to no shelter, aren't being fed or given water on a daily basis, and are chained or kept in a too small enclosure with no human interaction. Think about that for a minute. Put yourself in their position. Can you imagine being kept on a short chain, shaking from the extreme cold and freezing temperatures with improper shelter to keep you warm? Or no shade to keep you cool in the summer's heat? Having to eat where you go to the bathroom, if you even get fed at all? We take for granted our cozy, warm home when the wind is howling and it's 40 below, or our air conditioning is nice and cool on a hot summer day. Many animals suffer with no reprieve from the elements. These animals are sentient beings, just like we are. It's inhumane, and we easily have the ability to improve their lives. I thought of that quote, "Dogs are not our whole lives, but they make our lives whole." Our incredible humane officer Liz does a great job talking to people, making connections, and educating. And with this ordinance, she will be able to enforce laws that actually help the animal. I see the ordinance as a win-win. It's only needed for the very few, but it's extremely important for those animals that need our help. Because the city has their own ordinance and each township has their own separate code, this will really help Liz have a comprehensive code to use overall. This ordinance will help many animals in the county live a better life. It seems like a very easy answer to adopt this for Eau Claire County. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Clint Hyman. Are you on the line?
Yes, I am. My name is Clint. My name is Clint Hyman. I live at 3452 Mayor Road in Eau Claire, Wisconsin. I am currently the president of the Indian Head Kennel Club in Eau Claire, Wisconsin. And I also currently own two boarding kennels that are in the Eau Claire County jurisdiction. I think this is an item that does need to be addressed. Some of the items on here are pretty good. However, there's a lot of stuff on here that needs to be refined. So I think I would like this item to be tabled for further discussion and a vote at a later time. One of my issues is the size of the kennels that are being required with this ordinance. The sizes that are suggested here for a hundred square feet or a 10 by 10 for a 20-pound dog or less currently doesn't meet about 90% of the boarding kennel facilities, including the main society's kennels and enclosures. And if you have a larger dog, which would require a 10 by 20 space or 200 square feet, it certainly is going to put everybody in the business to have to redo their facilities and stuff like that there. So realistically, the size of the stuff that they're asking for on these, I think, is detrimental to the businesses and the people that are currently operating facilities in the area. The tethering, I agree, and it is extremely dangerous for the dogs to be tethered because they either wrap themselves around the tree or they wrap themselves up and get tangled up in the thing, and the longer the tether, the worse it gets to be. They have put some, you know, temperature stuff on here. This doesn't pertain to all breeds. I mean, you've got certain dogs, which are mushing dogs, that are used to be living out in, you know, freezing temperatures. You've got other dogs, which are a Chihuahua or a hairless dog that shouldn't be out more than five minutes probably outside in the weather. So I think there's a lot of things on this proposal that is very good, but I think there's a lot of stuff that needs to be further discussed and reapproach back to the board for a final decision before any of these are voted on on tonight's agenda. That's all I have to say. If anybody's got any comments or anything, questions?
This is public comment. It's a one-way dialogue.
Sorry.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Kirk McDonald?
If we go back to Sue Olson, are you on the line? Sue Olson? I do not see Sue Olson. Sue Olson, if you are on, you can raise your hand. That's all I have on my list for public comment.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who wishes to present public comment? Please unmute and identify yourself. Anyone else who wishes to present public comment? Last call. Anyone else who wishes to present public comment? Public comment is now closed. We'll now move on to reports to the County Board under 2.04.320, beginning with oral reports. Mr. Leonard for the Land Conservation Awards.
Thank you. Can you hear me and see my screen?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Greg Leonard, Land Conservation Manager for Eau Claire County. I am honored to work alongside some of the most passionate professionals serving Eau Claire County, the staff of Eau Claire County Land Conservation, who I consider family. Each year, the Land Conservation Commission recognizes those individuals within the community who share this passion. These individuals are part of a special family, a family that has a vision for the future. Please allow me to share some of the family's stories.
Greg, this is Samantha. Sorry to interrupt. I cannot see your screen.
Oh. You cannot see my screen?
No. I have made you a presenter, so you should be able to put it up.
I can see your screen. Can the others see your screen?
No.
No. Sorry. What can we do, Samantha?
Let me cancel and retry.
Okay.
Thank you. We can see your screen now.
Is that better?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I apologize for that. In 1895, Doug Nelson's great-grandparents start farming on 80 acres just south of Eau Claire in the town of Pleasant Valley. The original barn housed six milk cows. Today, more than 125 years have passed, and the fifth generation of Nelson families continuing to the tradition of milking cows two times a day. Doug Nelson farmed on their place his entire life. For the past 30 years, he has also helped his community by serving on the town board. As his son Derek desired to continue the family farm, they knew that milking cows on the original homeside would no longer be a viable option. An expansion would be needed to support two families, and the best option would be to move the entire milking operation to a new site, which would allow conservation practices to be included. Who is Nellie Holstings? It is the three family members you see here. Doug, the father, oversees bookwork, young stock, and helps with milking and fieldwork. His son Derek oversees the farm and field planning, the breeding program, milking, and everything else that comes up. His wife Miranda is in charge of the calves, helps with milking and fieldwork as needed, in addition to her full-time job as a calf and heifer specialist at Western Wisconsin Nutrition. This family does it all and only gets additional help as needed. The Nellie Holstings new facility was included as an educational on-farm tours for Farm Technology Days this past summer. The desire to include education stems from Derek's experiences in FFA as treasurer and president, and two years in a row qualifying as a finalist in the state speaking contest. He has served as an advisor to four agents in the county fair. Over the years, Nelsons have incorporated no-till planting, which conserves valuable topsoil in the cropping system. Developing and following a nutrient management plan allows them to fine-tune their manure and fertilizer spreading to prevent over-applications. Installation of a manure storage facility allows them to time their manure applications to prevent runoff. Nelson's family commitment to conservation will help assure that there are many future Nelson families farming in Pleasant Valley. Please join me in thanking our 2021 Conservation Farmers, Doug, Derek, and Miranda Nelson.
A round of applause, Supervisors.
I had to turn on the mute button.
I know Derek was with us this evening with his wife Miranda. Derek, are you able to unmute yourself?
Yes, we're unmuted now.
Okay.
Now, we just want to thank the County Board for considering us for this award, and we appreciate immensely and hopefully to carry on this farm for many more generations in Eau Claire County.
And we appreciate all the help that we've had from land conservation over the years through our expansion process and with buying our new farm on the west side of town to further our farming operation to the next generation. Thank you.
And now Supervisors, unmute yourselves, please. And a round of applause. Mr. Leonard?
Leadership. Every family needs leadership. Robin Walsh began his leadership with the Lake Eau Claire family when he moved to Lake 25 years ago. Robin started with the property he purchased by controlling any roting bank and stabilizing the shoreline with natural plantings as much as possible. But the work in his yard was not enough. Robin saw a need to help, so help he did. The fall of 2007, Robin spent nearly six weeks in his boat with students from the Wildland School. The school project was to map Lake Eau Claire, and Robin drove them slowly around the lake, taking data readings every 20 seconds. The result was a detailed lake map unlike anything previously seen. Many of the family around Lake Eau Claire saw the need to create a formal lake district. This would allow them to pursue larger conservation habitat work in the lake. Robin did much of the door-to-door contacting his neighbors around the lake, which allowed the lake district to form. In 2013, Robin and others began working with the Department of Natural Resources to add forest woody habitat to Lake Eau Claire. As Robin said, "This woody habitat is not for fishing. It is the habitat for the stuff you cannot even see." This project would entail cutting down trees near the shore and allowing them to fall into the water. The tree would be attached to the stump with cables to prevent the tree from moving. First year saw 50 tree drops completed. Robin donated his boat use, time, and the first $500 to cover the cost of cables and clamps. Project is done in cooperation with the DNR, and Robin's wife Jane usually feeds the DNR staff lunch on the project day. To date, over 200 such tree drops have been completed, which has helped Lake Eau Claire become one of the best local fishing holes. From tree drops to getting permits, from stabilizing banks to recording river elevations, Robin has led the Lake Eau Claire family to a brighter future. Please join me in thanking our 2021 Water Quality Leadership Award winner, Robin Walsh.
Supervisors, unmute.
Premier.
Am I unmuted? Am I unmuted?
I don't know.
Yes, you are, Robin.
Oh. Well, thank you, Greg, and County Board. Thanks also to Greg Gibson for all his help over the years, all our projects. And thanks to Josh Peterson and his crew at Parks and Forest. They've always helped us with the roads to our sand traps and our deposit sites. And I have to thank Marla Ohr for trusting me to get the job done. But a big final thank you to the full County Board for able to help us with our funds when you're able to. Without that money coming in, our projects wouldn't be possible. And hey, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year's, everybody.
Same to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg, are you done?
One more.
One more. Thank you. Okay.
One more story. This story began 60 years ago. Bill and Pat Hankey purchased a farm to enjoy with their family. Over the years, the family project was planting trees. This family project has grown to the extent that over 1/4 million trees have now been planted within plantations and windbreaks by the Hankeys. Hankeys have not only planted trees, but they have also established dairy plantings as habitat for Kornblut butterfly, which is an endangered species. Bluebird houses have been built with up to 60 houses being monitored. The farm has hosted road banding projects with students from UW Eau Claire. Over eight miles of hiking and stelich trails have been established, including bridges. Solar panels have been installed on property, help generate electricity. Pines have been created for wildlife habitat. The woodlands are following a management plan. Now raises the question, what else could the Hankeys do? Pat had said that the inspiration for their efforts came from her father, who had a concern for conserving the land, and had said that the land was not his, but borrowed from future generations. Bill had said that they enjoyed the land for many years. It was unique, and they wanted to take care of it in perpetuity. To make these notions come true, the Hankeys did two things. First, they leased 420 acres of land to the Beaver Creek Reserve for research and education. This provided the reserve with an opportunity to host outdoor education events. The second thing the Hankeys did to protect the unique property they enjoyed over the years was to then gift the land to the Beaver Creek Reserve. This gift, along with the perpetual conservation easement, will preserve their family's legacy for future generations. The Hankeys did admit this decision was not taken lightly. The entire family weighed in. As Bill stated, this was like giving away your firstborn child. The Hankey's family commitment to the future of Eau Claire County is impressive. Please join me in thanking the recipients of our 2021 Special Recognition Award, Bill and Pat Hankey.
Supervisors, because I'm mute. Thank you. Thank you.
A wonder.
Thank you, Hankeys. Thanks for your donations.
Thanks for your love of the land.
Amen.
We have you on screen. Go ahead.
Just want to say, the land has given us much pleasure over the years, and we're confident that it will continue to give the public and Beaver Creek Organization a learning situation which will go on indefinitely. We planted tens of thousands of trees, planted many acres of native prairie. And incidentally, I have to confess, I did relatively little of that. Much of the credit goes to my family, my wife Patricia, and our two children, Mark and Deborah. And in addition to the help from the family, I must add that members, volunteers, who are members of Beaver Creek also contributed a lot of work pulling weeds and spraying and doing all sorts of things necessary to get a good native prairie and a good stand of trees established.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. At the beginning of the evening, I mentioned that I worked alongside some of the most passionate professionals serving Eau Claire County. And here they are, your conservation family. Elder Leopold stated, "Conservation is a state of harmony between men and land." This is true. Harmony also relies upon the passion of our family members to This is true. Harmony also relies upon the passion of our family members to soar. I am honored to share some of our conservation family member stories tonight and would like to thank them personally for their efforts. It is through people such as these that our conservation message is conveyed. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Next on our agenda is the CJCC Service Award Judge Schumacher.
Thank you. Good evening and happy holidays to everyone. I guess this is awards night in front of the board. For each of the past several years, we've recognized someone who's made outstanding contributions to the Eau Claire County CJCC, which is the Criminal Justice Collaborating Council. Some of you may know a little bit about it. Some of you may know nothing about the CJCC. Briefly, the mission of the CJCC is to improve the administration of justice and promote public safety through planning, research, education, and system-wide coordination of criminal justice initiatives. The CJCC consists of 19 voting members. We began in 2006. All of the voting members are the heads of the various departments. It's an impressive group when we get together. Consists of the presiding judge for the county, county administrator, county board chair, sheriff, chief of police, district attorney, clerk of court, corporation counsel, director of the health department, state public defender, department of corrections, human services director, city attorney, a member of the judiciary and law enforcement committee of this board, and program coordinator for our restorative justice program. Until recently, we had three community members as a part of the board as well. As of our last meeting, we now have four. We've added a fourth with the understanding that at least one of those community members would have lived experience with the criminal justice system. Tonight, we recognize former chief of police Jerry Madison for his dedication and service to the CJCC. Former chief Madison is a graduate of the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire, the South Carolina Police Institute, and the FBI Academy. Was a member of the Eau Claire Police Department for 31 years. Retired as chief of police after serving in that capacity for 10 years. He served as an adjunct instructor at two Wisconsin technical colleges and taught classes on topics such as decision-making, critical thinking skills, understanding bias, and policing strategy. Is a past president of the Wisconsin Police Executive Group and served for two years on the Board of Directors for the Wisconsin Chief Police Association. During his career, he became a strong proponent for using proactive strategies to prevent crime and disorder rather than the traditional approach of simply responding to problems and then documenting it. While leading the department, he implemented several proactive evidence-based policing strategies and forged new police community relationships. He hired a police analyst to provide his staff with timely data so they could understand crime trends, crime trends quickly, and work within neighborhoods to reduce problems within our community. As a result, the department experienced a 65% decrease in complaints against officers and a significant reduction in crime. Chief Madison served as a valuable member of the Eau Claire County CJCC from its inception in the fall of 2006 until he retired at the end of 2013. He was a great fit for the CJCC. Some jurisdictions I know struggled with this collaborative approach, with evidence-based practice. And there were conflicts. Chief Madison embraced it. He was an integral part of the Eau Claire County becoming really a state and national model when it comes to evidence-based decision-making. So I want to congratulate the former chief Madison and thank you for all you've done for the community and law enforcement and specifically for the Eau Claire County CJCC. Got a nice award for you. We'll have to get that to you and we'll plan on doing that shortly. I'll ask for a round of applause for the chief and then if he has a couple of comments, of course, we'd like to hear those as well. Thank you, chief.
Supervisors unmute.
Thank you. Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge Schumacher. I appreciate it. I don't know if I can, if everybody can hear me or not. Am I unmuted? Yeah, okay, good. Just a couple of quick comments. I think the CJCC does very important work. And I believe it's essential to have all those different components of the criminal justice system working together to be as effective as we possibly can be. So I was very proud and happy to be a part of this initial group when, when this first started and the collaboration started and I know that's continued and expanded and they're doing great work and it really makes a huge difference. So I appreciate the recognition tonight. And thank you for your comments and that it's, it's a nice honor. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Next on our agenda is the ARP update Administrator Shoff.
Thank you. There are a couple of achievements or goals that we've reached in the last number of months. The first is in regard to the work that the broadband committee is undertaking. We have contracted with a program administrator who will begin to work with the committee as well as our potential local government partners to identify funding sources and strategies for having broadband expanded in our rural areas. We are going to proactively seek out opportunities and provide that program administration resource to our partners as they look to expand broadband. Along with that, at the last meeting, the committee also discussed digital inclusion and working to ensure that we have digital equity within the county. There are a number of different ways that that work can be undertaken. An example of this is a service that the county already participates in, which is called PCs for People, where the county donates equipment that is no longer of use to the county to an agency which strips these, any information off there that needs to be stripped off and the computers can then be donated to those who need access to computers. So the concept of digital equity is the provision of equipment, education, and access for those who are historically unable or have not had that type of access and need assistance for that. We're working with some partnerships to make that a sustainable and ongoing programming opportunity after we use the ARP monies to begin the process. We've also contracted with West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission to be our third-party grant administrator for the grants that will be given to businesses and not-for-profit agencies. The West Central Wisconsin folks are crafting a survey that we are going to be sending through a number of different channels. We will be sending it to board members, asking you to share it broadly. We will use the Economic Recovery Task Force, which is a community-led entity that covers local governments and businesses and not-for-profits in our community. And we've had that in place for the last two years as we've walked through COVID together as a community. And we use that as also a gateway to get the information out because what we're hoping to do is learn more about what some of the current challenges of businesses and not-for-profits are at this time. It's been a changing scenario. We're still in the midst of COVID as everyone is very aware. And there have been a number of state grants that have come down to our community. In fact, just the other day, $2 million worth of grants to various venues were just announced by the governor today. And so we're going to learn more about where the different needs are and use that information to craft the third-party grant administration so that we can target gaps or areas where there is unmet need. And so that work will continue. We hope to have that process up and running by the beginning of February. And that is the end of my report unless there are questions, Chair Smire.
The chair just requested if you have a question or a comment that you raise your hand just for the sake of good order. Are there any questions or is there any comment? Supervisor Christopherson.
Thank you, Chair Smire. And Ms. Shoff, I was just wondering where can we find transparency of how the county is going to spend the money? I've had a number of constituents ask for that and I'm just wondering where can I resource that information?
We actually have on our website, on the front page of our webpage, if you go down, if you'll scroll down, scroll down a little bit, you'll see a box that says American Rescue Plan. And on that page, we have a number of things. We have guidance that, thank you Samantha. We have guidance that's been given by the state and federal partners. We have the action that the board has taken to date. And we will also use this page to communicate out where funds have been allocated and how those funds have been used. So we will have all of that available as soon as that action is taken. Thank you for your question.
Supervisor Christopherson? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Supervisor Bates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that the step of having a contract administrator is going to be huge in being sure that we really use the money appropriately and that people know that it's available. So in looking at the strategies here that have been set up in order that we can really take advantage of this, this funding source in our community for small businesses, I think is just a major step forward. So thank all those that are involved.
Thank you, Supervisor Bates. Any other question or comment? Okay, you'll notice under section six are written reports, which you have in your packet, the 2021 Contingency Fund Report, and November 2021 vouchers, over $10,000. Any questions or comments there? Supervisor Bates, are you raising your hand? Don't confuse the two. Okay. Section seven, Presentation of Petitions, Claims, and Communications, you have in your packet the 2022 Eau Claire County Board of Supervisors meeting schedule. Are there any questions or comments in regard to that? Okay, we'll move on. Under first reading of ordinances by committees from the Board of Health, file 67, this is first reading of an ordinance, but I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the corp council to provide a little bit of background because this is such a large section in preparation for our consideration in the next meeting. Corp Counsel?
This is an ordinance that was prepared by the Health Department and then went through the Board of Health and is now before the county board for first reading. It amends various sections of Title VIII of the code and creates a new chapter 8.30 of the code. And you'll notice that earlier there was discussion in the public comments section about the tethering or the standards for care of domestic animal being 8.30. Also, I have sent a proposed amendment to Supervisor Christopherson, who is the sponsor of that legislation, to amend that and correct those numbers so that we don't have 2.830s or 8.30s, excuse me. But otherwise, this particular ordinance modifies various sections of the Health Code under Title VIII as indicated in the description here. And you know, it touches a number of different areas, everything from private wells to keeping of bees and poultry and public building sanitary sections. So basically, it's an update to much of the code under the Board of Health. And there is a fact sheet that was prepared by the Health Department that is in your information. It is filed on H6.
Thank you. From the Board of Health, Supervisor Cronk, any comment?
Did you say Supervisor Cronk? Sorry.
I did.
I am a nurse, but I'm not on the Board of Health.
Well, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's all right.
This is Supervisor Neiman. That would be me.
Oh, sorry.
And no, I have nothing else to add other than support.
Thank you. It would be important to have at least a comment for such a long section. So we will take this up in our next meeting. From the Committee on Administration, file 53. Kirk McDonald.
An ordinance to amend section 1.50.020 of the code, Schedule of Deposits, to create chapter 8.30 of the code, Standards for the Care of Domestic Animals.
Thank you.
If I may, Chair Smire.
Yes, sir.
Again, this is the one that we have a conflict with the prior ordinance because they are both creating chapter 8.30 of the code. I did send a proposed amendment to Supervisor Christopherson. And essentially this, if she agrees to that proposed amendment and signs it, it will come back and it will be modified to chapter 9.05 of the code as opposed to 8.30.
We could do it that way or we could bring it on to floor and amend it. Let's do it the way you suggest. Supervisor Christopherson. I'm looking for your, there you are.
Yes, thank you. Yep, I'm here.
All right. Could we have a motion to bring onto the floor the amended motion?
I would so move to move that to the floor, yes.
Christopherson moves.
That one second.
Yeah, one second. Thank you. Background. Supervisor Christopherson, I'm going to ask you to provide background here. And then I'm going to ask Corp Counsel to make any subsidiary comments.
Thank you, yes. Yes, as you heard about in public comments, also, we are just looking to bring forth some more guidelines for the care of domestic animals. The state statute is just very basic provisions that I feel Eau Claire County could definitely do better for the protection of our animals. And these are just very basic guidelines and really it's a teaching moment. The, the guidance in this ordinance is going to allow us an opportunity to educate the public as to how animals should be cared for. And our first intent is definitely not to fine and convict individuals, but to give an opportunity to provide better care.
Thank you.
I would remind the chair that this is still before the board for first reading.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we'll take this up at the next meeting. I'll be asking Supervisor Bates also to provide some background. From the Committee on Parks and Forests, file 79.
An ordinance to amend section 16.30.300B of the code, Campground Regulations.
First reading.
Oh, first reading. Thank you. Thank you for keeping the chair honest. Okay, that will come back to us in the next meeting. From the Committee on Administration, file 64, which is before us for second reading and vote. Kirk McDonald.
An ordinance amending 2.04.101010B of the code, Rule 1, Meetings, creating section 2.004.130C of the code, Rule 13, Diligent Committee Service.
Thank you. Motion.
Larry.
Bates moves.
Done in seconds.
Done in seconds. Thank you. Background, I'm going to ask Corp Counsel for background. Background, I'm going to ask Corp Counsel for background here.
Thank you. This is a proposal to change or amend the ordinance dealing with rule concerning County Board meetings and attendance by remote attendance. This came to me by Supervisor Schneider. Essentially, what it does, first of all, is to amend 2.04.010, Section B. So it adds the following language, and right now, the language is, "All meetings shall be held in the County Board of Supervisors chambers at the courthouse unless otherwise ordered by the Board." The new language would be, "All members of the Board shall attend meetings in person. The Chair has the authority to approve remote attendance by electronic means for individual members for specific meetings and remote attendance by electronic means for longer periods of time for members with a disability or illness that prevents in-person attendance at the meeting." And the initial draft of this also read, "Or as an accommodation under the Americans with Disabilities Act." There is a proposed amendment, Amendment Number One, that would change that last language so that instead it says, "Or as the result of an approved accommodation under the Americans with Disabilities Act." So that's the first portion of it. And then the second portion of it has to do with committees. And that would be to create subsection C of 2.0 2.04.130. And essentially, it is repeating the same language, but only for committee purposes. It says, "The Chair of the Committee may approve remote attendance by electronic means for individual members for specific meetings and remote attendance by electronic means for longer defined periods of time for members with a disability or illness that prevents in-person attendance at the meeting." And again, there's also another proposed amendment to change the written language as the original, of the original ordinance so that, "Or as the result of an approved accommodation under the Americans with Disabilities Act." So I would suggest, Chair, that first of all, you vote on the amendment.
Right.
If it is offered by one of the Board members, and then, second of all, to vote on the ordinance if amended.
Okay, the motion is in front of us on the floor. The Chair will accept Amendment One at this point.
I think you have to have a motion and a second for the amendment.
That's what I'm looking for.
Leary will move the amendment.
Backfield seconds.
Leary moves Backfield seconds. This is Amendment One we are talking about now. Any further discussion or question about Amendment One?
People just don't get it, do they? You're all night.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Backfield, are you making comment? You were just unmuted there. Okay. All right, I hear none. We're going to take a vote.
Schneider with a comment?
Please.
Go ahead.
To clarify, the amendment, what the amendment does is it makes it clear that the ADA accommodation exception has been worked through the Human Resources ADA process. So it's not up to the Chair who's granting the exception. It's not up to the Chair to figure out whether the person has an ADA accommodation. That's done through the Human Resources process. That's all that the amendment is specifying.
Thank you for the clarification. Any further discussion of Amendment One? All those in favor of Amendment One, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay. Amendment One passes. We are now back to the main motion as amended with Amendment One. I believe there's Amendment Two to come forward. I'm looking for, oh, Supervisor Bates.
I would move Amendment Two.
Thank you.
Cronk, second.
Cronk, second. Thank you. Comment from Corp Counsel or from Supervisor Schneider? Or is this the same?
I'm not aware of Amendment Two.
I don't know what Amendment Two is.
Corp Counsel.
Same here.
Corp Counsel, did you not see there's an Amendment Two?
No, there's only one amendment. It's a written amendment.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood that. Take that all back. We're now back to the amended main motion with Amendment One. Any further discussion or question about it?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Pagonis, I have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Pagonis. I don't see it.
Oh, it's because it's on a brown background. But I have two questions and probably for Corporation Counsel. I don't know who that is. So number one, I recall that either in Roberts' Rules or maybe in our code that there was an issue with attending a meeting remotely and then voting. And I want to know if that issue is resolved by the language of this ordinance that if we're attending remotely, we can still vote on matters that are on the floor. So I guess I'm asking Tim that question.
Yes.
Well, the quick answer to that is, is we're all attending this meeting remotely tonight, and you're voting on matters that are before the floor.
Right, but this is one that goes beyond April 22nd. So, you know, in June, I have a meeting and, you know, I've got a broken leg, so I'm not going to be in person. You know, how does that preclude me? The question is, does remote attendance, attendance implies all the full ability to participate?
But it also has to be approved by the Chair. That you're going to be, you know, the first part of this is, "All members of the Board shall attend meetings in person." And then beyond that, in order to attend remotely, you have to get the permission of the Chair unless there's an approved accommodation under the Americans with Disabilities Act. And your question, I think, has to go more to also the electronic voting system. Is that correct?
Or it just, yeah, it's just being, voting in general, because I recall something in Roberts' Rules that said, "You can attend a meeting remotely, but you can't vote if the meeting is being held in person." I realize that right now, we're all remote.
And I'm not, I'm not aware of that. I don't recall reading that in Roberts' Rules. My research on this subject was first and foremost more concerned about open meetings concerns and accessibility to the public with regards to holding meetings in a remote nature. And as some of you or maybe all of you know, the Attorney General has issued an opinion at the start of the pandemic indicating that, you know, essentially, there isn't a case law or statutory authority to hold meetings in a remote manner. But it did indicate that, in his opinion, that it would be permissible as long as it was accessible. And that's why we do such things as provide telephone numbers and access codes, and we provide access through web pages. You know, as long as those things continue, and we're going to have remote attendance, and individuals could continue to hear the comments or votes of the individual members, I don't think that there's going to be any problem with that. But that may be defined differently in the future by the courts and/or the legislature. But at this time, it's one of those things that's still sort of in the gray area, and we're relying upon the opinion of the Attorney General with regards to that. I'm aware that other counties have adopted language similar to this. But other, and then there are other counties that absolutely refuse to have any remote attendance. So it goes both ways. And I understand what your question is, you know, that creates a problem if you're doing a remote attendance and the public can't hear that. I think that what we will continue to do is continue to have access either through telephone or through web meetings in the future.
Well, and I have to say, Attorney Sullivan, my Roberts' Rules of Order were written from in 1967, which was before computers were invented. So I probably need an updated copy there, but thank you for that answer.
Chair Smire, Backfield.
Sorry, I'm muting. So here's the update, Supervisor Pagonis. You are correct that that is in the current Roberts' Rules. However, the, our code supersedes Roberts' Rules. Roberts' Rules does say the Assembly does what it wishes to do. So thanks for your concern and clarification. I would also say that the provision we have regarding our current remote meetings, which expires in April, does not really affect this provision. This is a separate provision. I think that's correct. Is that not, Corp Counsel?
That's how I would read it.
Okay. But thank you for your question. We'll have to move through this very, in a very delicate way. We want to honor the needs of our individual Board members and provide for the fullest participation, both for the Board member and for the constituents of that Board member. So is there any other comment? Are there any other, oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Backfield, you have your hand raised.
My only question would be the ability of the public comment. I don't know if that's been taken into consideration anywhere, or if it should be at this point. I'm just sharing that forward.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, like tonight, we had a number of people that presented and also made comment tonight electronically. And when we go back in to session together, hopefully, one day, would we still be able to have those people comment remotely? Just a thought.
Corp Counsel, I think that the answer to that is, public comment is going to have to be in person if we're in person. Is that correct?
That's how it traditionally was done in the past. I think that the Court or the Board could potentially make a rule that allowed by telephone or web access, but that's up to the Board. You know, public comment is really just an opportunity for the public to come in and voice their opinion about various things, as the Chair has indicated many times. It's a one-way conversation. It's not a two-way conversation. And so as long as, you know, it stays within the three minutes or whatever the rule is that's determined by the Board, I think that it potentially could be also electronic.
I'd like to put off that discussion.
Schneider with a comment?
Yeah.
Well, just a moment, please. I think we'd like to put off that discussion at that point until we come near the April deadline for ending the remote meetings. That would be the Chair's preference. Supervisor Schneider, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
This resolution is just opening the door a crack in that it only affects county supervisors who wish to participate for one of three different kinds of reasons. I think potentially those reasons could be expanded over time as we become more comfortable. And public participation could be added, but that, these, those would be separate things.
Thank you. Is there other comment?
Supervisor Bates, please.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Bates, your hand was raised.
Thank you. I think that the ordinance that is in front of us this evening, I think Supervisor Schneider is absolutely correct. It really is a step in the right direction to be able to be sure we do have the ability to have people participate if their circumstances qualify them to do so. So rather than delay this, I would suggest that we pass this particular ordinance. And then, as time goes by, if we find ourselves open to making other changes, that they be made after they have been brought forward.
Thank you.
I would support, I would urge your support of this.
Thank you. I see no other hands raised. Supervisors, that's a second reading. We're proceeding to vote on File 64, a reminder, as amended. All those in favor of File 64, as amended, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, all those opposed by nay. All right, I think we have, Clerk McDonald, you have to help you with this. Is that 26 aye and one nay?
That is correct.
26 aye, one nay. The motion passes. Okay, next is File 84.
A resolution authorizing the county to enter into the settlement agreements with McKesson Corporation, Cardinal Health Incorporated, AmerisourceBergen Corporation, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Janssen Pharmaceuticals Incorporated, Ortho McNeil Janssen Pharmaceuticals Incorporated, and Janssen Pharmaceuticals Incorporated, agree to the terms of the MOU allocating settlement proceeds and authorize every entry into an MOU with the Attorney General.
Thank you. This resolution comes forward from the Committee on Administration, which voted unanimously to move it forward to the County Board. The Chair looks for motion to approve the resolution.
Welkey moves to accept.
Welkey moves to accept the resolution. Second?
Schrafnagle.
Schrafnagle moves to, I'm sorry, seconds the motion. Thank you. I'm going to ask the Corp Counsel to provide background on this. This is a rather complex arrangement. Just the, just the resolution itself took up more than 60 pages. So Corp Counsel, you're on.
The resolution itself is not 60 pages, but there are a lot of supporting documents that go along with it.
I spent a long time on my printer printing.
And I would agree. It's almost 60 pages.
Yeah.
Let me give you a little history, first of all, about this situation. Back in 2017, I believe it was, the County Board adopted a resolution, 171871. That resolution authorized participation in legal action brought against the manufacturers and distributors of opioids in response at that time, and still the national opioid epidemic. At that time, there were 66 counties in the state of Wisconsin that joined together. And essentially, they hired two law firms out of the state of Wisconsin, Kruger Dickinson and the Von Bresen Roper Firm. And subsequent to that, what happened is, is that this issue became a national issue. Most of the states in the country, many of the counties and municipalities also joined in to litigate, with litigation against the manufacturers and distributors of opioids across the country. So essentially, what happened is, is then these cases were consolidated into an action. That action has been pending before the Ohio Federal District Court for a number of years. Tonight, what's coming before you is a proposal for a settlement with the defendants, McKesson Corporation, Cardinal Health, AmerisourceBergen. Those are distributors of opioids, and then Johnson &amp; Johnson and all of its subsidiaries or branches, who is, who was a manufacturer of opioids. This settlement is the result of a lot of work between a number of law firms. It is something that the County Board needs to deal with in December. We didn't get this information until late November. It needs to be passed, if the Board is going to pass it, before January 2nd of 2022. Essentially, what has happened during the course of the litigation is that the state of Wisconsin also commenced its own action against the opioid distributors and manufacturers. And then subsequent to that, in the summer of 2021, the state of Wisconsin, the legislature created a section of the statutes 160. created a section of the statutes 16512. Essentially, that defines the distribution of a settlement of a statewide level. And any any settlement that came into the state would initially go to the state and would be distributed with 70% of the proceeds going to the participating counties and 30% to be retained by the state. And I believe that is also going to the Department of Health Services. In addition to that, it calls for the creation of escrow accounts that will be created for the payment of attorney's fees. The agreement that we entered into back in 201718 indicated that we would pay up to 25% of the amount of the settlement for attorney's fees. And actually, if you read the resolution, it is now down to 20% and I'll give an explanation for that in a minute. So essentially, what has happened is is that there's been a global settlement, which means that there's a settlement between these distributors and manufacturers for approximately $26 billion. And that has to be spread out across the country. The distributors, they will pay approximately $21 billion over a period of 18 years. And then Johnson and Johnson will pay approximately $9 billion over no more than a period of nine years. The terms of the settlement require that at least 85% of the settlement proceeds must be used for abatement of opioid epidemic. So it's money that is got to go to a specific use. And in fact, there is part of the resolution that indicates that the county would be creating a separate account to deposit the money so that it could be used for opioid opioid epidemic abatement. The potential uses are set forth in exhibit E of the documents. That is the part immediately following the resolution. That exhibit is found on page 34 through 48. The resolution is found on pages 29 through 33. So of that money, Wisconsin is going to receive approximately $402 million total with approximately $282 million going to the local government. Eau Claire County is estimated to receive $3,314,731.87. And again, that's spread out over 18 years. And I say that this time it's approximate because the attorney fees have not been determined. And also, it requires participation of all of the counties who have signed on to this litigation to approve the settlement. If not all of the counties approve that, that number will likely go down. So in the first year, the counties would receive two payments. And with regards to the attorney's fees, as I indicated, they are potentially a maximum of 25%. But there has been created a national clearinghouse for which the law firms can apply to to receive funds from to cover their costs and expenses and their fees. And any money that they do receive from that will reduce the amount of attorney's fees that will be charged to various municipalities and counties that are being represented. And as of the time that the new most recent resolution came out, that figure was now down to 20% and it may go down sometime in the future. This resolution, essentially what it does is it authorizes the county to enter into settlement agreements with the distributors and also Johnson and Johnson. That's two of the documents that are found within the packet. Those would be found in pages 49 through 56. The first one is the settlement Johnson and Johnson. And the second is the settlement with the distributors. And then there are two additional documents. All of these documents would be, if the board approves these, would authorize the county administrator sign them. There is one which is a memorandum of understanding between the state and the local governments. Primarily, that memorandum of understanding affirms the 7030 split and that also is related to the creation of the escrow account with regards to the attorney's fees and the distribution of funds throughout the state of Wisconsin. And then the other MOU is the local MOU. And that is the document between Eau Claire County and the other participants in lawsuit of the other counties in the state of Wisconsin. Really, what's important in that document is exhibit A, which sets forth all of the various percentages and dollar amounts that are calculated to go to those various entities within the state of Wisconsin. So at this time, what is being recommended by the firms that are representing Eau Claire County is that the county sign this document, that they do it now because we need to do it before January 2. If we don't do it by January 2, then essentially we get bumped out of the settlement and we have to proceed on our own and recreate all of the evidence and facts that have been created by the firms representing us in a period of 16 to 19 days before the federal court in Ohio, a task which would be almost impossible to complete. So that's most of what I have to say. It's sort of a high-level overview of this. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
So Tim, the motion before us tonight is to accept the participation in receiving this settlement.
Correct. It's to approve Resolution Number 84, which authorizes the if you look at the language of Resolution Number 84, there the first now there be resolved is there are five areas there. Four of those are for the execution of the MOUs and the two settlement agreements. And then eventually, once all of this gets settled, there will also be an agreement that will be established for the escrow agreement at the state level. The next be it further resolved is the county hereby establishes an account separate and distinct distinct from the others, general fund, which will be the opioid abatement account. And the funds will be deposited into that account. And then there is language about authorizing the escrow agent under the escrow agreement to establish an account separate and distinct for the attorney's fees account, essentially is what that is for.
Thank you. Questions Supervisor Wilkie, followed by Supervisor Bates? I think you're muted Supervisor.
My apologies. Not so much a question, but a comment. I would urge my colleagues to vote in favor of this. It's only step two in a long process, as it was said earlier. I think it was started back in 2017. This is step two. There'll be steps that will follow, three and four probably. Step three will probably be development of a plan and step four implemented of plan. But that'll only happen once we've got the money in hand. But it is an exciting opportunity to finally do more in terms of our intervention in the demand side for opiates. It really can provide an opportunity to enhance what Human Services is doing and our Department of Health in the area of prevention, education, and treatment. But those areas will be later defined once we have that money in hand. But I I urge your support for for approval.
Thank you Supervisor Bates, followed by Supervisor Stelches.
I I would just add something very quickly, and that is first of all, the urgency of getting this taken care of before January 1. And secondarily, the other most important thing in this for me is the ability of the our administrator to be to authorize her to act on behalf of the county and sign these documents. I think those two things are the most urgent things that need to be accomplished. All of the other material is supportive of the of the action. But for me, we really need to get on the road in order to get these funds. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Stelches.
Yes, thank you. A question for Attorney Sullivan. Is there a similar participation in any action against Purdue Pharma?
Purdue Pharma is currently in bankruptcy. And there was a proposed settlement in the bankruptcy court. That was challenged by individual states. And I think it was just last week, it might have been the week before, that the settlement was thrown out by the bankruptcy court. So that right now is in further litigation with regards to what that potential settlement is going to be with Purdue Pharma. But eventually, there will be some sort of settlement. And the issue there was is how much the owners of Purdue Pharma, the family that owned the company, was going to actually contribute towards the settlement.
Right. But my and I have followed that with with some interest. I'm wondering though, do we as a county, are we participating in any of that or?
Yes, we are.
Somehow?
Yes, we are.
We are. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I see no other hands raised. Supervisors, we will now move to vote on file 84. All those in favor of file 84, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay. It is unanimous. Thank you. From the Committee on Parks and Forests, file 74.
A resolution adopting the 2022 annual work plan for the Parks and Forest Department to comply with the County Forest Administration grant program.
Motion?
Schroffnagle.
Schroffnagle moves.
Kristofferson.
Hamburg Boyle seconds. Explanation Supervisor Stelches, you're on again.
Yes, thank you. Okay, this is an annual event. We need to do this resolution per year. As the sheet says, it's not $3 million, it's $51,000, but it's still still nice. And this is a grant from the DNR to pay a significant portion of the wages of our forestry director. The resolution or in order to get this grant, we have to have a resolution which approves the annual work plan for the upcoming year. And so that's what all the multiple pages are in your packet. So what we're really doing is approving the work plan. I won't bore everyone with all the details, but every year we try to touch upon a few of the high points. It's been a number of years since we've had any significant capital funds for the Parks and Forest Department, but in 2022, we will have some. And so some of the major projects that are coming down the line will be a new entry station at the Coon Fork Campground, which is kind of a degraded little shack today. So we're going to make that much more greeting friendly type entry point at that park. We are also doing significant improvements to Harsted Park, including a new pavilion there. The old one has already been torn down. And I think another thing that you'll probably see is that we're going to be installing some automated pass stations so that as you enter some of the parks, some of the more popular ones, you'll be able to actually get your park pass through a machine much like you would going into the parking lot at the airport or something. So we're going to install a couple of those stations around and see how they work. So those are some of the big things in the offing coming up. And I would ask for your approval of the the work plan so we can obtain this grant.
Thank you. Questions or discussion? Questions or discussion? Supervisor Anton with a question. Go ahead. Does this include the description of how much forest material will be taken and how much will be replaced by trees? I I thought I saw that in a description of the document.
And if it Yeah, yeah. In there, we typically have to talk about our annual cut. And you know, for round numbers, we cut about 1,000 acres a year. There is a maximum allowable which we we do not reach. But we do try to estimate about how much we do. And out of the we actively manage about 40,000 acres of timberland out of the 52,000 acres in the county forest. And we we touch about 1,000 of those a year. So that's in there, yes.
The amount that is replaced, it looks like it's about 2% of what is being cut. Is that correct? And and how do we rationalize that?
Well, I think when they're talking about the replacement, they're talking about those species which in in their largely plantation pines, where we would reach a final harvest on that species, completely clear that plot and replant it with seedlings. However, the vast majority of our forest is propagated through natural regeneration. So that wouldn't appear on this. So if we have an oak stand where we go through and 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 cut that off either by thinning or through and sometimes complete removal of everything, clear cut, those species tend to regenerate on their own. So that wouldn't be in the replanting part.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other question or comment? We'll now proceed to voting on file 74. All those in favor of file 74, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed by nay. It is unanimous. Thank you. From the Committee on Finance and Budget, file 82.
A resolution awarding bids for the fall 2021 tax deed sale of tax deed property. Directing Corporation Council will prepare quick claim deeds on the described properties and directing the county clerk to execute said quick claim deed on behalf of Eau Claire County.
Thank you. Motion?
Motion by Leary.
Leary moves second.
By Bates.
Second by Bates. Explanation Supervisor Pagonis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is pretty easy. All five of the properties listed here are vacant. It's just parcels of land. And this is something that's done annually to and it just a one fell swoop. There's nothing remarkable about this except that we make a profit for each on each one of them, some a little bit larger than others, but we do profit from this. So this would require a roll call vote and a simple majority.
Thank you again for the reminder. Okay. Questions or comment?
Judy Gatlin with a question, just
Supervisor Gatlin.
Just to try to understand. Do we do we advertise these houses as available or do people usually reach out to us?
We advertise. Yes, we do. And and there's a period of time during which we get the bids and then we take the highest bid, unless it's an adjacent unless it's someone rebuying their own property.
Thank you.
Other question or comment? We'll now move to vote on file 82. Clerk McDonald, will you take the roll call vote, please?
Gibson?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Pagonis?
Yes.
Anton?
Yes.
Zook?
Yes.
Gilson?
Yes.
Elders?
Yes.
Mallory?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Bates? Russell?
Yes.
Gatlin?
Yes.
Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Neiman?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Beckfield?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
Diluka?
Yes.
Janssen?
Yes.
Schroffnagle?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Kristofferson?
Yes.
Kristofferson?
She said yes.
Yes. Thank you. Anne Smire.
Yes.
It's 27.
Thank you. The vote is unanimous. The the motion passes. We have reached the end of our agenda, but before we adjourn, I want to wish you all a Merry Christmas, a Happy Kwanzaa, a joyous Hanukkah, whatever other holiday you celebrate.
Happy New Year.
Thank you. Thank you. I lost this.
Thank you all.
Hi, happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Bye-bye.
I missed the light-filled Diwali, so.